All right, I'll call the meeting to order. Wednesday, June 21st, Plating Commission Meeting, Old Sabre, Connecticut. Let's do a roll call. Doug McCracken.
Here.
Paul OK.
Here.
Kathleen Suggen, Jonathan Miles.
Here.
Mike Bender.
Here.
Megan Duplessis and Dennis Colmary do not appear to be on. We'll seat Michael for cap. We'll do the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes as written?
So moved.
I get a second. Second, any comments or questions on the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? I will abstain. Any correspondence?
None.
Moving on, they proposed amendments to the regulations for public improvements. Section 103B dash one to allow for the expansion of maximum pavement width at the direction of the Director of Public Works. Chris, do you want to give us a little background on this?
Sure, so. A few months ago, I talked to you about our regulations for public improvements. Tonight is a public hearing. About a year or so ago, Larry Bonin, our Public Works Director, Town Engineer, Building Official and I, we discussed some issues relating to minimum pavement width of 10 feet. We're finding, especially in the beach communities and areas like the, here the Residence A District where people have very tight lots when they go to install code compliance systems. And they have an existing house when they add the leaching fields. What happens is in the new system, then a lot of times it eliminates their parking and they end up with on-street parking. Or in the right-of-way, the regulations for public improvements allow you to have the 10 feet of paved area in the right-of-way. However, that would typically be for an entrance to a driveway. And the circumstance, the proposal is where the maximum pavement width may exceed, I'm sorry. It may go up to exceed 20 feet where there is no parking allowed on the street along the frontage of the property or where there are onsite physical constraints related to health code requirements. The reasoning is that what happens is especially in areas that are a little wetter than others, people want to have a surface to park on and not necessarily the grass in the front because their cars sink in the grass. So what they do is then they park along the road where you're not allowed to park on the road because it impedes safety vehicles and we have an ordinance for that. So we had this discussion. I did bring this to the Board of Selectmen. They did endorse the regulation change. On May 2nd, we did send out referrals. This is the first night of the public hearing. We met our requirements as far as timelines to send out referrals. We did hear from Gateway and OLS. You do have those letters there. We did hear from a number of other agencies that said they had no comment or they felt it was out of their jurisdiction. You should have those referrals with you. And I think it's pretty simple.
Do we have anyone online from the public that wants to talk about the?
You can promote Rachel. She's with our consultant.
Okay.
Who is she with?
John Kaskowski.
Oh, okay, thank you. So we have no one from the public to comment on this?
Megan Fox.
Okay, Megan is here, so.
So you need to, so the public hearing is open?
Yes, public hearing is open. Any public comment? There are none?
You have to just attendees, so we can, so there's no attendees online in the audience?
Close the public hearing on this proposal. Can I get a motion to approve?
Can we just go? Yeah. Yeah, so the deep comments say they recommend requiring pavers or pervious pavement. But we don't have any other pervious pavement requirements in town, correct?
Not, well, not in the road regulations. I mean, there are times we have requested pervious pavement.
As part of a project.
As part of a project, but I think this would be in a very limited amount in certain circumstances. So it's not as though by amending regulations, everyone could exceed that 20 feet. They would have to get an encroachment permit. They would have to go through our Public Works Director. They would have to show that they're in a circumstance where they have no parking or very limited parking. So.
So it's not really, we don't need to include this in there because of the minimal usage expectancy?
I don't think, I mean, it's really necessary. The other thing to it with pervious pavement is it's good in certain circumstances, but there is maintenance to it. So a lot of facilities, state facilities and match train stations will have pervious pavement, but you have to vacuum it. People don't realize to keep it, to keep it up. You know, and it's also in an area where you're going to have travel with salt from the road and other things. I just don't really think it's as practical in this area, especially because some of the areas too are a little bit wet. Megan is here too. Okay, we'll just know it. Hi, Megan.
Megan, are we doing this because of the number of applications I go to ZVA or?
So this isn't a, this is a, this is public improvements. It's not subject to ZVA. And so there is no variance process. The rule is the rule. This would give our Public Works Director a little bit of discretion. It's not a zoning regulation. It is, it's a planning regulation with the Board of Selectmen. So public improvements also go through it. We haven't had a subdivision in a while, but our public improvements regulations outline what we require for roads, outline what we require for sidewalks, widths, materials, you name it. It just, we haven't had a subdivision in many years. So it's not as familiar. We don't use it as much as we used to.
I just have a question. I was puzzling where the wording says the, I wanted to envision this more than 20 feet. Will it be basically touching an extension of the road is how I envision it.
So parallel to the road in the right-of-way?
Right, right. So you're basically instead of parking on the grass, you're parking on this. So you talk about, or it mentions taking down the shrubs on both sides. That's what puzzled me because if it's continuing with its tangent to the roadway, there could only be brush on one side.
Not necessarily. I'm not sure where you're getting the brush on the side of the road, but the proposed regulation with the red.
The second to the last line, along both sides of the entire length of the driveway.
That's already there though.
That's existing regulation.
Like if this is the road, I think it's here and here, you know, you can't have.
So Paul, I understand what you're saying. All brush trees.
Asking beyond the edge of the pavement along both sides of the entire length of the driveway.
So this has to do, it doesn't have anything to do with what's being proposed tonight. But what it's trying to say is that this regulation initially was for when you have your driveway, a normal conventional driveway, you have a pavement width and you have an apron where you drive in.
Yeah.
What this is talking about is brush and trees removed a distant first sight line in that circumstance. So that's an existing regulation. So you don't want trees and bushes all the way to the edge so that you can't see when you back out. So that's what that text is referring to, but it's not part of what's being amended tonight.
Yeah, no, no, I just wanted to understand the wording. I mean, as a, as a person not familiar with the wording, I just kept puzzling over and I don't know if it can be clarified, but I'll leave that in your hands because with the rule.
So it wasn't advertised as part of the proposal tonight? We didn't, no, I'm just saying, so in future regulation change, we could potentially discuss that.
Enough said, okay, thank you.
There's no maximum width, like the Public Works Director could extend for like the entire width of the property or would that kind of five-foot radius sort of limit it? Or it had to be a gap between the houses?
It could go in between the, between the houses.
I'm just saying, if you had to say 2,000 and all doing that, now the whole road is.
There are some non-conforming houses that are not FEMA compliant, that don't have garages underneath that when you put in a code compliance system, they have no more parking, zero. So that's other than the right-of-way.
Yeah.
So it's a tricky situation because you're.
Yeah, let's just understand, like, is this going to let them basically the whole, all the streets and these areas are going to, could be widened by, you know, 10 feet or is there some limiting factor?
Well, I think that is houses are torn down and rebuilt. They're elevated and people are putting garages underneath, so I think.
Place the park under it.
And then parking underneath which goes through, but when you have a house that's flat on the ground and the septic, all of a sudden was, the yard was flat on the ground and people would park on it. Now all of a sudden you have to build it up three to four feet of fill to go through and put retaining walls to hold it in. What happens is now you can't drive over the retaining wall. So then there are circumstances where people have no driveway on their property by needing the help of them.
But we believe this to be limited in scope.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a, yeah, I'm assuming the number of properties applies already small to me.
Right now, it's the Residence A District, which the maximum lot size for a compliant law is 20,000 square feet. This would probably apply and for lots that are 3,000 to 5,000 square feet.
Right, and it's only lots that have been constrained, like you mentioned.
Through the health.
Yeah. I mean, I think the scope is pretty, there's no maximums that you can't.
So I'd like to make a motion, we adopt or to approve the proposed amendment to the regulations for public improvements, section 103B dot three.
Prior to that, you need to make a motion to close the public hearing.
I can make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Any opposed?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the proposed amendments to the regulations for public improvements, section 103B dot three.
I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the 2023 comprehensive updates of the Plan of Conservation and Development. I'd like to open the public hearing.
You can make a motion to make it more mature.
I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
We don't have public hearings, so it's good for that.
And I get a second. Thank you. All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. What I'm going to do is I'm going to turn this over to John Kaskowski, our consultant, and he is going to summarize what we're looking at and everything we have in front of us. You got 30 seconds, John, go.
Well, I'm going to take about 25 of my seconds to introduce you to my colleague Rachel Burstein, who is also with Tyke Planning and Policy Group and has been instrumental in pulling this plan together, both from a content standpoint and also for making it look as good as it looks. And so I just wanted her along to participate. I think I have about four seconds left. So this is an attempt to bring together a number of threads that have been sort of scattered over the course of actually decades. It had been the practice of the Old Sabre Planning Commission previous to the last couple of years to basically treat their Plan of Conservation and Development, which is traditionally a once-a-decade updated comprehensive plan for a municipality per state statute. Old Sabre had a sort of a novel approach, which was to take the Plan of Conservation and Development in chapters and update one topical chapter every year or so over the course of many, many years. And the proliferation of topical chapters expanded to include sidewalks and open space and natural resources and housing and transportation and many, many topics, such that the updating once-a-year approach meant that the last time this plan's housing chapter had been updated was more than 20 years ago now. I believe it was 2001 was the last time the housing chapter had been updated, which meant that the housing, you know, analysis and goals in that chapter missed, you know, both the boom and bust of 2007, 2008, you know, the rise and rise again in the late, in the late 2000s, COVID and all of the changes that caused by that. So it was determined by staff in this commission, I think, to attempt to bring a lot of the very old chapters up to date to consolidate a number of the chapters into a smaller number of more umbrella topics. And then, and then also bring a common thematic approach and look to the, to the document. So it would be all updated essentially at once and kind of hang together. So the way that this was accomplished, and this has taken place over about two years working with this commission, is that the, the five sections that have, that have resulted from this consolidation are residential development, natural resources, which includes topics of open space conservation, natural resources, as well as climate change impacts and resilience, historic and cultural resources. And the last one is transportation and infrastructure, which includes all sorts of issues. The complete transportation system, vehicles, bicycles, pedestrians, greenways, micro mobility, as well as other elements of infrastructure, sewer, water, telecommunications and that sort of thing. And then the final is economic development, which was most recently updated prior to this consolidation effort. The, the one thing I'll note is that each of these new consolidated chapters have been given five themes that act as through lines for the Plan of Conservation and Development. And those are connectivity, opportunity, preparedness and resilience, vitality and sustainability. And each of the topics, the, again, the sort of the umbrella consolidated topics were viewed in the light of those guiding principles and, and goals were established to forward those, those broad thematic goals. So we have, and the, the process was in each case, this commission obviously had held a number of work sessions, which were open to the public. We actively through staff solicited input of the public and stakeholders in terms of identifying goals and concerns over the next decade. We had a comprehensive community development or a community survey online as well as paper copies that were made available in both English and Spanish and compiled as their, their input was incorporated. And then we also, as this document was being prepared for public hearing, staff sent this out to dozens and dozens of stakeholder groups, levels of government, state government, regional government, and we received comments from that, I believe. And those comments, again, thanks to staff as well as Rachel keeping track and commenting to a single public input document that we, I believe we shared the spreadsheet with, with the commission. A number of the, a number of the comments were general, not terribly specific, just sort of commenting on how the commission's approach was. There were a great number of small, you know, typographical or word choice comments. Probably the largest number were comments on the implementation guide, wherein we would assign tasks, a lead entity for a specific action that various, various commenters suggested should be better placed with, you know, let's say the Historic District Commission rather than the Conservation Commission or something like that. And then there were a number of specific comments where people said, well, could you please mention this or could you please incorporate that? And we've tracked all of those comments for you. I'll make one final comment. Is that the one thing that we are still going to do is obviously we changed the layout and approach for those four topical, the first four topical chapters. We have not yet sort of consolidated and reformatted the economic development chapter. Our intent is to sort of simplify and streamline that chapter and fit it into the visual format of the prior, the other four chapters without really changing much of the substance or the goals established in that economic development chapter because again, that had been done relatively recently. And the idea is just to unify that so it, so it hangs together with the rest of the plan. I'll stop there and ask Chris if you have any additional, anything that I missed.
I think you pretty much, you've got it all. I think for this plan of development rewrite, we really had an extensive public outreach session. As John was saying, we started in the spring of 2021. We pretty much have had a meeting almost once a month on that. We've worked as staff, John, Rachel and I, as well as some assistance from our land use clerks in between the meetings. The survey results were distributed everywhere from senior centers to hood countries. I mean, we tried to include as many people as possible. On May 17th, we did have a public comment section before we even advertised the public hearing for tonight. Tonight is the first night of the public hearing. We did send referrals out very early to give folks a number of time. We didn't even schedule the public hearing. We just said we anticipate when we'll schedule it. Those went out on April 25th. You do have copies of the referral responses. You did receive one from the Architecture Review Board. It was approved by the Board of Selectmen. I was at that meeting for that presentation. There was no comments. You have comments from the Conservation Commission, the Wetlands Commission, the Parks and Recreation Commission, the Historic District Commission, the Zoning Commission. We did receive, as John said, we did some very extensive outreach throughout the state and we did receive a number of emails from folks like Darcy Winter and Water Resources, the Water Company, who just said, thanks for this, but we really don't need to comment. I think at this point, I'm really not expecting any additional comments other than what you've received because it was a little overwhelming with some of the comments and they were very particular. As John said, we put together this chart as a guide, even as I was reading them to go from one section to the other section, especially how all the memos were formatted differently. We worked as a team to break this down into section, break this down by page. Joanne Galley, our, and the Land Use Department, she also spent extensive amount of time trying to make, break this down by page, section number, comments, commenter. John and Rachel have also spent a lot of time on this, so we're hoping that this can help to streamline the comments. And I think there, there's a number of things as far as staff recommendations, you know, wording changes, enlarging legends, changing some photographs and changing lead entities that I think on the staff level, we all agree with that. We may have left someone out or someone said, we don't do that, you do that, or this group does that. So tonight is your first night of the public hearing, so I'll turn it over.
Thank you. Is there any comments from the public?
So for the record, there is no one in the audience and there are no attendees online.
So I think there is no public comment? Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Thank you. As far as where we go forward with what we have in front of us, like Chris just said, there's a lot of changes, you know, added and or something like that, or change the lead entity. I believe that stuff that just Chris and John and whoever else is involved take care of. I don't think we need to go over that piece by piece. I read through this a couple of times, quite lengthy. I personally do not want to go through this one by one. We would be here until the next time we have to update the plan. And I also think a lot of it is valid commentary, but it's too specific for the plan. The plan is supposed to be a general outline, more to use to guide people when they're doing some sort of development on how they should be approaching it from what we like to see going forward in the next 10 years for the Town Hall Sabre. With that being said, I'd like to open it up to comments or questions from the commission and their thoughts. Paul?
I would concur with your assessment that it should be a roadmap and that we shouldn't bog it down. We're talking about no clue or some other thing. Because the other thing is three years from now, it will be something else.
Correct.
For one thing, so anyway.
Valid point.
I agree. I would definitely, you know, make it more user-friendly, not lose sight of who is looking to get guidance from using this as opposed to just shooting our arm.
Well, the other comment that I'll mention that Chris mentioned to me earlier today is that we're going to make this and all the comments we received from the survey as part of an appendix. So it's not lost from the document. It will be part of the document, but it's just not, we're not incorporating every little piece into the document.
And I have to give that credit to John because as we were talking today and I was going through, how are we going to go through this chart? I mean, there's so many great things, but do we really need to define?
Right.
Things that are already defined in other regulations or define, you know, what the Wetlands Commission does or where we need to remove an invasive plant? So I think that was a great suggestion. Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. Doug, you have your hand up?
No, no, you covered it, but so I'll just try to summarize. So where there's a staff PC recommendation like to change the lead entity, that's going to be done, to be done. And then the economic development plan John mentioned would be reformatted. So that's really all that's remaining. And then these would be attached as an appendix. The remaining comments would be attached as an appendix.
Along with the survey results, I think that was, it was a huge effort. And again, it's one of the most successful surveys that we've had. And we've never done that before.
Any other comment? Megan, anything?
Are we going to respond to each of these in the table? To make it, you know, to show that we've looked at these? I mean, maybe not us, maybe staff responds to each of them in the recommendations. Maybe they highlight the ones where they would need our guidance on. We can see what actions have been taken on the rest of them and then reevaluate any that may be tricky, going with the general concept that, you know, the ones that are very specific, we don't need to incorporate. We trust staff and John to deal with those and write the responses. But there were some particularly coming from the Zoning Commission that asked us to rethink. But there were some particularly coming from the zoning commission that asked us to rethink our approach on things. Um, I don't necessarily agree with the zoning commission's recommendations on those. So I would like for the record to have responses from planning commission. To push back on that, to show that we didn't just ignore it. That it was considered and and we decided to do something with it. Or not. Or example, I was just gonna give a specific example.
Uh, it it, I mean, it's a valid point. People spend a lot of time, you know, putting these comments together. I mean, I think there's some issues said that everyone's gonna agree or disagree on them. Uh, but I think part of the idea of having it is an appendix is just saying that, you know, this were, these were comments. Maybe in the future someone considers them. It's not being ignored. But, you know, for example, a lot of the different things in here. You know, maybe have been covered already. So, for example, there was a comment. Hold on, give me a second.
Man, I could give you an example of one that I found, which said, um. Uh, maybe you should reconsider the emphasis on TOD. I think it's had its day.
Well, I I mean, I think that's kind of what we're looking at, you know, this is a ten year plan. Um, these are, I mean, we could put them in, not necessarily, you could say these were comments received, not necessarily something endorsed by the planning. Part of the appendix, but there were certain things in here. There was a comment to elaborate on what one of the commissions does. I think it was Wetlands. To define them and their functions and that, and I mean, we have that. There was some discussion in here. About, I, there's a lot of discussions about trees. I think that's really a hot topic right now. I think we've covered a lot of that. Um, in our natural resources section. There's some comments in here that I don't think have to do with any of our regulatory commissions. Um, you know, we've had comments through the hearing process about people speeding on golf carts. Um, we did in the public hearings have some. In in the surveys have some comments about staff recommendations or, you know, different changes. So I think that John and I and Rachel kind of weeded through some of that to say, okay, this. You know, speeding is really not a land use concern, that's a police commission concern.
Right, right. I guess my my thought would be to just have that kind of stated in the, where it says staff recommendation. Yeah, not a land use concern or, you know, change made, edit made or something like that, just to see like what was done with them.
I hear, I hear what you're saying, but I think from a, for us to go through and hit each one. May be a little bit too arduous and I don't necessarily see the value to that. I think if we could do something in the introduction to the appendix that we have looked at all these. And they were considered but felt to be either too, however you wanna put it, I mean.
Too broad, they didn't apply.
Right.
Or they were covered under other regulations. I I mean, there's concerns about, you know, adding crosswalks in certain areas. And I mean, we really went through these and kind of consolidated for the chart. Because when some of the comments came in, we were like, wow, you know, here's, which I mean, I I I think is great. But I think this is a way to say.
Thanks, but no thanks.
You could just say, no, I don't know, the planning commission notes, the planning commission notes the comments and, you know.
Right.
I look at one in particular, safe routes to schools should be in the sidewalk plan in order to be applied by the zoning commission. Well, we're just saying we need to provide for safe routes. Where it falls isn't part of the plan. You know, I think that's part of whatever department is planning out a safe route to the school. The Department of Ed, Board of Education should be working with land use to figure it out. It's not part of planning.
Or so then. I was gonna say, so then what I'm hearing is the way we're moving forward with all of these comments is. Where it's just a simple switch, make an edit to a sentence, change the lead organization, fix a typo. Um, change a picture, for example, those changes will be made. Um, and then everything else, we're comfortable saying, we saw it. It's not something that fits within the purview of this plan. Um, but it's here for future reference.
Right.
So did.
To to that end, I would actually, I would actually propose that perhaps, I I assume people have the 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 spreadsheet in front of them. We could probably consolidate the 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 last, the right hand two columns in terms of uh staff recommendation and commission action. To to sort of consolidate those and just into just action taken, you know, text change made, lead entity changed, noted for the record. Um, you know, and we could, we, you know, I think we could probably have a couple of, you know, deemed too too specific, deemed too broad, general comment. And and, you know, kind of put them through that way, but I I think we can probably consolidate those last two columns.
Yeah.
Yes. Like that, going through these is probably sixty percent. In my opinion, the the P C D should be a thousand foot view. A lot of these are like a three foot.
Well, yeah, I mean, they're asking how many, how many charging stations should we have?
Right.
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 That wouldn't make sense for the plan, the plan to say, right, we want to try this, we want to add it.
And I mean, we could, on the staff level, I mean, we can kind of.
Pretty dangerous. You want five.
We could go through on the staff and just maybe make a comment. So for example, study the possibility of home courting a seasonal river cruise line. And ferry across river or inter town through Essex and Deep River. And the economic development section of the plan, which I know Paula's very familiar with because she was part of that committee writing it. There's all kinds of language in there saying we need to expand tourism opportunities, we need to go through. So I I think it's covered, but it's, it's narrowed down in the microscope, you know, as they're saying, it's not that thousand foot view. And I think there's other things, um, golf carts are considered motor vehicles. Enforcement along one fifty four is encouraged. It's really not a end use issue there.
Right. And you know, and I had this conversation with Chris this afternoon. You know, technically golf carts aren't allowed on one fifty four, it's a state road.
And they're not a motor vehicle, according to DMV.
According to DMV. But still, we also don't want the police stopping every golf cart they catch on one fifty four, because then that's just gonna give us a bad reputation. So it's gotta, we've gotta give leeway for each the division, department, commission, whatever, to do their business without being too specific.
And I mean, the plan of development really doesn't regulate police enforcement. That's what the police.
Horizontal enforcement.
Exactly.
It's right, it just lays out a framework for how we wanna go forward.
And I absolutely don't disagree with any of those assessments. I think that's absolutely right. My only point is, I don't know that they all fall under that category and I would like to kind of parse that out a bit better.
I think what John suggested, if we can go through and consolidate the last two columns and come up with four or five responses. And then we can elaborate a little more on the response in the um introduction to the appendix. Then you've given people the feeling that we have looked at it and considered, and I agree with Megan, that that's important. Because that's why we got so much feedback. If we gave people the opportunity, now we need to acknowledge that we actually looked at it, which we have. You know, so I I think that's that's valid. So if we can come up with, you know, four different responses, you're putting a drop down this in the Excel spreadsheet, quick, quick.
Absolutely. And I also just wanted to throw out a quick, um, great job to everybody who put this together. I've put these together before and it's a terrible pain and this is wonderful, so thank you.
It's been an experience. I I don't have any other comments. Anyone else? Then, not hearing any other comments. Are we okay with going forward and allowing staff to make the changes that we've described? To the ands and the buts and the lead entities changing, okay? And then allowing them to make the changes to what's been deemed as, you know, too broad, too narrow, too something. And move forward with this document, but closure to the twenty twenty three Plan of Conservation and Development?
So specifically, you're proposing approving a contingent upon staff dispositioning these ands.
Reformatting.
Reformatting the economic plan.
I mean, we will get a final review, don't get me wrong. I just, I think for the time being, we don't need to discuss it anymore unless some people feel otherwise.
No, it has to be pared down.
Right. The other thing that I would suggest, um, is when we go through this, make sure we spell Catherine right. Because I I do have a tendency to spell it wrong myself. Um, we might wanna have a table of acronyms. Because someone threw up the word TOD and I think of a toad and I don't know what TOD means, so, you know.
You're right, it's it's a toad. You got them.
Okay, good, good. I'm terrible with acronyms, I hate them, so.
So what we could do is, I mean, since this is really, it's not necessarily a part of the plan, but it's something we received for the plan. John and I could work on that retail and we can get the other formatting together.
Sure.
You could potentially take action tonight and then we can consolidate this, just to kind of show. Your responses to those boards, you mentioned, so. This is really, in some ways, a unique situation because we have a lot of regulatory boards and commissions. Well, we'll get comments and comments and comments, whether it's an application or a plan. Um, and I think it's, it's nice that you wanna kind of make those recommendations per Megan's suggestion to say, look, we read them. This is, this is why we didn't incorporate them. So at least they know we've read them and I mean, we've sent you, I think, three versions of this so far to kind of keep you moving with it. So I I mean, it's really up to you if you wanna act. And then we'll get you those final drafts, which are more layout and text consolidation, typos and and work on this.
While I'm comfortable giving a vote of confidence to move forward, I would personally prefer, if there's going to be changes. To be able to see that final copy and then vote on that final.
So so this is just, this is not a part of the plan? It's just an appendix of something, so we could work on that. I think you agree, John?
And I think you should have troll attitude to blend it in or do whatever. But as I said, you know, knowing that, I I would personally feel more comfortable voting on it after it's been all done. I mean, we can have a vote of confidence at this point, a approval, but that's my opinion.
No, and I agree with what you're saying, and that's kind of what I was saying. I would like to move forward and hand this off and say, you know, you have a hundred percent confidence that you're gonna take care of it. You know, whenever you're done with the whole thing, we wanna take a look at the plan one one at a time and then.
Absolutely, and it's, we still got work to do, Rachel. We get a lot of, and Rachel, we get a lot of formatting. But it's, I mean, the intent is not to change the content, it's to 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 put it.
Now it's to do that final edit massage and make it look better.
Right.
That's why they brought Rachel on, because of the lack of that. And any other questions or comments? I'm not looking for a vote. I was asking, we need to pull it away.
Well, you need to do something, so this.
Say what?
So you need to either make a motion to continue deliberations to your next meeting. You either need to make a motion to approve, you need to make a motion to deny.
Yeah. Well, you you closed, you closed the public hearing, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so you, I mean, you could just table it at this point, you're.
Okay, I can make a motion to table.
To the July fifth meeting?
Are you gonna be ready for July?
No, I don't think so.
That's, no.
I don't think anybody wants to be here in July, that's kind of, I I don't know.
Or the first meeting in August.
What do we think, John, about tabling to? July nineteenth, we can always, we can continue it to the July nineteenth meeting and we can always continue it again.
Yeah.
Certainly, certainly the um, the response table will be done well in advance of that. Um, and we'll have to, and and we can um make probably a good number of the typographical and lead entity changes to the, to the actual text. Um, by then, I, the the economic development chapter is 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 a bit of a bear. But um, yeah, I think we'll we'll have, we'll definitely have stuff to to review um and incorporate by the nineteenth.
You know, we'll table it till the nineteenth.
I I'm kind of pushing towards the nineteenth because the Plan of Development adoption, I don't mean to put you under pressure. Would make a number of huge credits for our Sustainable Connecticut application, which is due on August first. So I know we may not push, it may not work till. I guess you could figure it out, we could always go from there. Sorry to put the pressure on everybody, but that's a huge credit maker.
I'd like to.
The man knows, he's laughing.
I'd like to make a motion to table. Further discussion.
Continue.
Second.
Continue deliberation.
Thank you, Paul. Second, um, all those in favor?
All right.
All right. And any opposed? All right, any abstaining? Thank you. With that.
John and Rachel will talk tomorrow. I think you kind of, no, we have a lot to do. I'm working on the text. I'm working on the text, I promise.
Yeah.
All right, I've I've started to, I've started to simplify and and add some stuff to the uh public comments as also, so.
Okay, any committee or staff reports?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Rachel. Any committee or staff report?
Yes. The um, we had the kickoff meeting a week ago for the. Four shoreline town sea level rise.
Including.
Including.
We're calling them a town, but we know.
Penwick, St. Brook, Westbrook and Clinton, so four, four towns. So we had the kickoff meetings, the uh, the consultants selected were Colliers Engineering. Uh, they do have an office in Madison, um, but they're, they're very large. Um, the Scott Gigerich was there, our, one of our selectmen. And also Joe Russo, he's the head of the Beach Community Sea Level Rise Groups that have kind of forums. He's like, I think, the overall head of those.
Yes.
And he lives over in the Pennwood area. Um, so interesting guy, so we get. Yeah, Noel Wood, I'm sorry, thank you.
So that committee actually became a nonprofit. It's a, they're, they've applied for nonprofit status, um, as their own independent sea level rise climate adaptation, adaptation change committee.
Yeah, so I I bonded with Joe and I'll be at some of the meetings, Paula, to, you know, get more of a feel of what's going on. But but so big picture, the consultants are gonna be like in a data gathering mode, you know, what other studies and plans are out there. Um, we have our working website has been set up and then there will be a huge public outreach. Um, they're looking to leverage uh plan, community activities. We told them about the street party this coming Sunday. That was a little short notice because I'm I'm not sure they're gonna make that. But, you know, things like the Chili Fest or something, they may have a table out there to engage the community. They'll be having, um, you know, advertised sessions. Um, and then and then there will be a public website. Um, so it's, the consultants came across very experienced and very knowledgeable. So it's, the consultants came across very experienced and very knowledgeable and, um. You know, we're looking forward to working with them. So, oh, anything else?
It was really, I mean, our kickoff meeting, uh, now. It's kind of at the staff level gathering information for them and working. So Doug is on the. Kind of the executive committee. Uh, we, our kickoff meeting, I'd say there's probably about forty people there. Uh, when we get into the huge community outreach sessions, I think there's going to be. A lot more between the three towns and the bureau. Um, so I'm working on gathering that information for them. But I think Doug pretty much covered it. So since. We don't have a sea level rise committee because we're a little ahead of the other communities and we talked about this at the planning commission would act as a. Kind of that committee as things come up, especially as we. Move into natural hazard mitigation by like. Does that, Doug is that, no?
Let me bring it up. With that, I will enter some of my to a church.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstained?